Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Okay, this time would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This time we have a couple of proclamations to read. Whereas childcare aware of America and other organizations nationwide are recognizing childcare providers on this day and whereas over half the children under the age of six nationwide are estimated to spend some time in a non-parental care arrangement on a weekly basis, which provides critical enrichment opportunities and nurtures development for children of all backgrounds and is a vital building block for our economy and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has created tremendous hardship for childcare providers and the families who depend on them, they have continued to meet the needs of families while risking their health and financial stability to remain open and whereas our future depends on the quality of the early childhood experience provided to young children today and support for high-quality childcare represents a worthy commitment to our children's future. Now therefore, I Louis Williams, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, do hereby proclaim May 6th, 2022 as Provider Appreciation Day in the City of Moore and urge all citizens to recognize childcare providers for their important work. Was there anybody here? Jana Westbury? Jana Westbury? Thank you. Have a second one. My lucky night, right? To recognize National Police Week 2022 and to honor the service and sacrifice of the law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracies. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of Moore Police Department and whereas some sixty thousand assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in over seventeen thousand injuries. And whereas since the first known line of duty death in seventeen eighty-six, nearly twenty-three thousand US law enforcement officers have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. And whereas last year, the names of six hundred and nineteen officers killed in the line of duty were added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. These six hundred and nineteen officers include four hundred and seventy-two officers who were killed during 2021, three hundred and nineteen fatalities were COVID-19 related. Many of their stories of sacrifice have been lost to history until now. And whereas the twenty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. And whereas May fifteenth is designed as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that I Louis Williams, Vice Mayor, on behalf of Glenn Lewis, Mayor, formally designate May fifteenth through the twenty-first of 2022 as Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And that to further remember their contributions, I direct all city flags to be flown at half-staff for the week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Open it, yeah.
Thank you.
And we do appreciate our, appreciate our police staff and officers that diligently do all that's requested of them in protecting and serving our community. Okay, item number two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April eighteenth, 2022. Item B is accept seventeen hundred and ninety-nine point seven-nine square feet of permanent public right-of-way and utility easement from Richard Montgomery located adjacent to the west side of Hillcrest Drive from Cass Avenue South approximately three hundred and fifteen feet for construction and maintenance of a new water line and sidewalk as part of the Hillcrest Drive Ward Two Residential Street Improvement. Item C is prove and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021-2022 in the amount of four million eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Make a motion that we approve the consent docket?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, thank you. Item passes. Item three is consider approval of a library services, facilities, and maintenance agreement with the Pioneer Library System for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Mayor and Council, this is the normal agreement that we have with the Pioneer Library Services. Just to renew, recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, will you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item four, consider renewal of a contract with Pivot in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for operation of a community intervention center to receive and hold juveniles who have been taken into custody by law enforcement agencies.
Vice Mayor, Council, this is part of our standard routine contract negotiation updates with this company. It did go up a thousand dollars this year. Originally, they wanted it to go up to nineteen thousand, but Major Belling was able to negotiate that down to sixteen thousand, which is only a thousand dollars more of an increase, and they do a great job for us. So this is just a routine renewal of that contract. Recommend approval.
Chief, do you know off the top of your head how long we've been working with Pivot?
I do not know, but I do know that Major Belling has, we've been doing it long enough that Major Belling is now on their board.
Oh wow.
And we have one of the longest-standing relationships with Pivot. I do know that as well.
Perfect, thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All right, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item five, consider awarding bid number 2022-009 reconstruction of the Ward Three Residential Street Improvement Project to Nash Construction Company in the amount of one million five hundred and fifty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Jerry, just before you start, Vice Mayor and Council and people in the audience just got a text from Galen Kitch. There may be a tornado warning, phones go off, but it's well south of us. It may clip the south edge of Norman. So even though we may get the phone warning, it's not close to us.
My phone says tornado warning, I'm out. I'm just saying. You can sugarcoat it any way you want, but, oh, I'll drive you.
Vice Mayor and Council, as part, in November, the 2021 GL bond included three residential street improvement projects, a couple in, a couple projects in each ward. This project is Ward Three Residential and Street Improvements, which includes West Main Street from Markwell to Norman, South Classen Avenue from Fourth Street North to between Second and Third Street, and Southwest Twenty-seventh Street from I-35 Service Road East to the end of the cul-de-sac. The bid opening on, for this particular project was April fifteenth. We did receive, five bids were submitted. One of those was considered non-responsive. Of the four bids received, three were under the engineer's estimate and one was over. And to give you an idea of how prices are erratic and all over the place right now, this particular project was nineteen percent under the engineer's estimate. So we're seeing a significant savings on this particular one and, you know, and we opened bids last week on Ward Two and those were about eighteen percent under the engineer's estimate. And I don't know if that's the engineer escalating their estimates from the standpoint of what's going on with the rest of the world other than roadway construction. Buildings, you know, with steel, et cetera, are up forty to fifty percent. You know, of course, water and sewer projects because of the petroleum products have been up eighty to a hundred percent. And so, fortunately, these, for the roadway projects, were about eighteen to nineteen percent under. Nash Construction Company was the low bidder and, and we would recommend that you award the contract and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Have we ever done business with Nash prior? Do you know?
I, I don't know if the City of Moore has. I know the City of Norman has done significant work with them. Our Public Works Director now, Tony, he did a lot of work with them over in Norman.
That's great. Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item number six, consider entering into a maintenance financing and right-of-way agreement with the State of Oklahoma Department of Transportation, financing and not to exceed ACOG STBG-UZA total estimated cost of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars for the signal detection and opticon system, Nineteenth Street Corridor in Moore. Project number thirteen, J-3-5803004AG and state job number 3580304 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Council, if you recall, it's been over a year ago now, the City, ACOG recommended a ward of funding through ODOT for the upgrading the signals on South, on Nineteenth Street from Santa Fe all the way east to the Broadway Tower Road intersection. So we'll be upgrading those signals from the current camera type, which when we get these rainstorms or if we get, you know, the sun shining directly in the camera, you know, they have problems. We're going to radar detection and those problems should go away. This project is funded a hundred percent with a not-to-exceed amount of seven hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars for that project. And if it, if it should go over the not-to-exceed amount, then we'd be looking at general funds to cover the remainder of the funds. But it's nice to receive an award from ACOG and be able to spend some of that money in Moore. We'd recommend approval of the project and signing the agreement.
That's great. Thank you, Jerry. Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item seven, consider approving a professional engineering services agreement with Mieschek and Associates LLC in the amount of forty-one thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty cents for design of the North Fork Little River Erosion Control Project located at Bryant Avenue and Southeast Fourth Street.
Council, just on the, on the north side of Southeast Fourth Street and on the east side of Bryant Avenue, the Little River, or Little Fork River Project comes through there, the water comes through there and it's, the erosion is getting right up to the north, or to the northbound traffic. And so this particular agreement would allow them to go ahead and do the design work, including a 404 permit from the Corps of Engineers so that we could provide erosion control. And we're going to move the road over to the, to the west just a little bit. Once we get out of the intersection, we'll move it over to the west just slightly, a couple of feet. And, and then we'll provide concrete mats to be able to help control the erosion control. This project's only going to be about four hundred and fifty feet long, just shy of actually Third Street. And would recommend approval so we could get started on that.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. Item eight, discuss and consider ordinance number 100602, amending Part Four, Chapter Four, Article A of the Moore City Code by amending Section 4-104 by adding requirements and limitations for backyard chickens and establishing a sunset date, providing for separability and providing for repeater.
Vice Mayor and Council, Chad Denson will present this item tonight.
Again, I'm Chad. I'm the Assistant Community Director. And we were asked to research a lot of Oklahoma City's ordinance, basically for the backyard chickens. But we actually expanded on that. I don't know if you guys looked at the memo that Elizabeth provided? And it gave a grid of whatever community had based on the standard. Now, a lot of our stuff has to do with the property as far as where the location of the coop and, you know, the size of it and what's allowed onto the property. But after we're doing more research, we discovered, we talked to animal control and realized there's a lot more issues other than just the placement of the coop itself. It's more about the chickens itself. And in Elizabeth's memo, she provided a couple examples in there of what's kind of some, after this happens, you know, after we pass it, there could be additional concerns of, of the area that have to be discussed with it. So we asked that, the summary of the research proposal ordinance could involve more discussion with other horses it could violate.
So I did read the memo that Elizabeth presented and I should have reached out to my counterparts in other cities, but didn't end up getting back to them. So what do other cities do? So one of the points that you guys made very clearly that when you pick up the chicks at the, you know, tractor feed store, you can't tell if they're hens or roosters. And part of the noise control is that we want to make sure that there are no roosters present because that is the biggest concern. So what do other cities do when you find out, four months in, that you've got a rooster, not a hen?
Well, I, I talked to John here. He could probably tell you more what the other cities do with the rooster itself. As far as the zoning violation, I, I deal with the coop and everything else, but the noise would end up being a citation. For instance, we'll do a rooster. The rooster was unknown, it grows, and it becomes a noise ordinance. Well, it doesn't permit, so we're going to have to remove the chickens like that. But if we remove the chicken, the facility doesn't allow for roosters. And if we have two roosters, then we have to worry about the fights. And also another understanding, I listened to John on this, was there's not a lot of rescue programs, if any. We can't give a rooster back to another citizen within the City of Moore. Then a lot of farms don't want the roosters because of the fear of the viruses or diseases that it could carry. John can elaborate more what the other cities do with the actual chicken itself. But my understanding, it's kind of a reoccurring issue with other cities. They're still trying to figure a lot of this out and a lot of it, I don't think they've gotten figured out.
Right. I think, I think that's a concern. I think that, I love the idea that having hens and chickens and when it works and it's clean, but the idea of all of a sudden having a rooster and then having more than four chickens because it's fertilized the eggs and then the city is at a loss on how do we handle that and what do we do next as far as the recipe goes? John, can you weigh in on what other cities do with the roosters? Because I know I've, I've heard people off the cuff say things like, oh, you just butcher it. That's part of what we want to avoid, just so we...
Right, like you said, it's hard to identify them, especially when they hatch up to a certain age. And by that time, they could have all roosters and nowhere to take them. Especially their surrounding cities having an ordinance against them as well. And there's just no rescues for just roosters. And like Chad was saying, the avian bird flu, that is very high right now. Galen just done a, a class over that as well here a week or two ago over the avian influenza. So, and that's very, it's going around rapid right now, so. And what, I think what the cities are doing now, they're just pretty much citing the owner. And, and still, you still have the problem of where's the bird going to go?
And it's, so right now we allow four animals in a household in the City of Moore. So this would count. If I had two dogs, I could only have two chickens. Is that correct?
Correct.
And there's no lot size?
There is.
Variable in this?
Well, it says you have to be thirty...
So this ordinance allows it in the RE, R1, R2, R3 zones? So your R1 zones, like a single family, it's a six thousand square foot lot. We do require a setback away from the side property line for the coop.
Right.
Be so far away from a house or a dwelling.
That's thirty feet, right?
Thirty feet from any type of dwelling other than the actual owner. And it has to stay five, the coop has to stay five feet away from the side and ten off the back, just like any other type of accessory building.
So it has to be thirty feet away from my neighbors or away from me, or any dwelling?
If you own the chickens, it has to be thirty feet away from your neighbor.
Okay, okay. Okay.
And the other two classifications, R2 and R3, single family on those are six thousand square feet. And duplexes are seventy-five hundred square feet. And then RE zones, three-quarter to two acres. And that's what's in the draft ordinance right now.
Has anybody signed up to speak?
So is there anyone that would care to speak on this issue? Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you both. Appreciate it. Thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we pass the ordinance.
No second?
Okay, anyone care to second?
Let's just, let's just do a vote.
Not without a second?
Right. They were talking about tabling it. I'm just saying this do.
And then just vote it, or?
We can die for a lack of a second, or? Then we got to make another motion.
So if it dies, then we have to make another motion, not to approve it?
Whatever we decide.
So either way, you're gonna...
I'd make a motion, we table it. I'm not comfortable.
I'll second the table and motion.
I'm not, I would make a motion.
Well, we, we got to deal with his motion first.
Well, it's dead. There's no second. So we can make another motion.
The original motion dies for lack of a second?
Right.
Now we can make a second motion?
I would make a motion, we table this until July first and do more research. I would like to have a solution on what we're going to do with the chickens or at least have more background knowledge on how other cities are handling them. I think just citing a noise ordinance is not the answer. That puts more work on our team without a solution for not only our citizens, but for the problem at hand. So I don't feel comfortable passing it. In a perfect world, I think that if you can go pick hens, you're totally good with that. But I think that there are ramifications that need to be, need to have a solution.
There's a staffing issue here, too.
Well, we already have a staffing issue with the, with the needs that we currently have. So if we add chickens and we don't have the facilities at the animal shelter and we don't have a backup plan or a local nonprofit that can come in, I'm not comfortable putting that burden on not only our staff, but on our citizens. So I make a motion, we table it until July first.
And Randy, it's okay to go ahead with this motion to table, even though there was a motion to approve? Since he didn't get a second, we can go ahead by making the second motion. For lack, perfect. So first and second.
Okay.
Nope.
Any other discussion, any questions? Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes to be tabled. At this time, we'll go to item nine. Consider designating the purchase of thirty-six Ford police vehicles totaling two million one hundred eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars and one E1 Typhoon twelve-hundred-and-fifty-gallons-per-minute custom pumper for the fire department at a cost of seven hundred and nine thousand two hundred dollars. Utilizing second round American Rescue Plan Act, ARP, funds upon receipt.
Vice Mayor and Council, this was discussed in the individual budget meetings we had. And these are the typical vehicles that we would buy anyway. And so upon receipt of the second round of ARPA funds, we would like to be able to go ahead and order these vehicles. But we would not do that until we actually have the money in the bank.
Make a motion to approve the purchases.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. This time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item ten is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April eighteenth, 2022. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021-2022 in the amount of one million six thousand eight hundred four dollars and seventy-one cents.
Motion to approve the consent docket?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item eleven is the consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April eighteenth, 2022. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2021-2022 in the amount of nine hundred eight thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Consent docket. Please call the vote.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item twelve is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's one person signed up, Darrell Cairns. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Darrell Carnes and, do I, home address or business address? Okay, so it's 207 Northeast Eighteenth Street, Moore, Oklahoma, 73160. I am a owner of Mary Jane Dispensary, so the very first cannabis license here in Moore, Oklahoma. I've came before this council before. And tonight, I would like to make an agenda request for the consideration of the restructuring of the MMJ business license fees in the City of Moore with regard to the passage of House Bill 2646 and the requirement of certificate of compliance and what that bill does for our communities. So I have provided a copy of House Bill 2646 to City Attorney Brian. But we've came before this council before. We adjusted the fees once. And that's when someone's initially applying for their cannabis license. And a lot more is required at that point. It has to go through multiple people's hands and considerations, inspections, et cetera. But what House Bill 2646 did was, and not the City of Moore, but we do advocate all over the state of Oklahoma, and there were cities that were actually charging more for their certificate of compliance than the actual state themselves that was doing the work. And so with House Bill 2646, it basically said that within the city ordinance that the certificate of compliance is no longer required. Not that we're not asking, you know, or we're asking to relieve ourselves of all business license fees. I know those exist. But in the event that a licensee is to renew, I would like to ask before the council for reconsideration of, of that fee. When you go to renew your license here in the City of Moore, currently, it's the same as a, a brand-new licensee. So it's six hundred dollars for a dispensary. It's nine hundred dollars for a grow house. And on the renewal process, given when we go to get our state license, we can just go ahead and, and literally, I can use the certificate of compliance from way back when now. And y'all still have the same kind of process within the city. Y'all still use that same state documentation, et cetera. And so what we're asking is, we literally just had our... And so what we're asking is, we literally just had our compliance inspection today, and it took about five minutes of that inspector's time. We stay up to par, we stay in compliance, and, and we keep our stuff in order. And we just believe that maybe a reconsideration of that license in the event of renewal, it may be time, you know, to consider that. We had kind of asked in relation to some of the other business license fees required within the City of Moore, so our request before the council is that it's more in line with what something like that would be. So I ask that the council moves to move this item to the agenda.
Any questions?
So if I understand your request, you're saying that based on this House Bill passing that you would like to see our, the business fees for medical marijuana stores being more in line with what our other business fees are for?
Yes, just...
Shops or whatnot?
Currently, it's the exact same as a new licensee. We just believe with the workload and, you know, in comparison to administrative value, and we know that there's work that has to be done, not saying that there doesn't need to be a fee at all, just that maybe that, you know, reconsideration of how much that we're asking in comparison to that inspector coming in and really just spending a, a couple minutes inside the facility.
We definitely want our departments and stuff to be able to add some, some vocabulary to this to confer if, if that's an anomaly on your part, or if that's consistent throughout the inspections that they do. So we've got a lot of things that we want to talk about before we put it on the agenda.
I thank you for your consideration, Council.
Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else care to address this, Council? Okay, if not, then item B is items from the city council or trustees?
So, within the last couple weeks, I had several people ask about our ordinances in the cemetery, and I appreciate Brian, I swear, oh, there, Brian, thank you, thank you for reaching out. There's a lot of questions and concerns about how we clean and making sure that it works for our staff who's mowing the yard, mowing the areas, as well as making sure we're respectful to the people who are visiting the cemetery. So I know that it's in works, and there's still conversations to be had, but I'm always very thankful that our staff is so receptive to what our citizens are concerned about. So thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, item from the city manager, trust manager?
Just one thing, last week, Chief Gibson and myself gave presentations to the Oklahoma Association of Chief Police, so had a very well-attended conference and glad they were here, so.
I, I also thought it was really, sorry, I forgot, I did want to mention this, that we have a police chief who is now a part-time coach at Moore High School, super cool meeting him, Officer Adams, am I right? Am I? I think so. I'm not, I was a hundred percent certain until I saw your face, but yes, I guess I'll just in there.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, item thirteen is adjournment?
So moved.
Second. Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes, we are adjourned.